Good morning. Call to order this May 14, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and welcome to the worst allergy day of the year.[15.62][15.62](laughter) Would the clerk please call the roll?
Good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
There.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 17, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you, and would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 33, I do need a motion to continue item 9. This is to terminate a contract with KP LLC and approve a new contract for consolidated utilities billing and service print and mail bill online presentment and customer portal services.
So moved. Please vote.
Mr. Natoli.
My screen went dark.
Oh.
His screen doesn't work.
His screen.
I vote yes, but can't register.
I'm gonna just go ahead and call a vote as unanimous vote. I also need a motion to continue item 14, authorization to execute horse lease agreements with sheriff's office personnel for the use of horses and mounted enforcement as needed during the period of June 1st through May 31st.
Move to continue? Please vote. Which item?
Why are we continuing?
I don't have any notes on that item.
There's a couple of questions that came up that I need to work with the sheriff's office, come back on May 21st.
Okay. Thank you.
It was up earlier. About yes, but I-
Okay, I think they're working on that issue, sorry about that. Unanimous vote. That concludes the clerk's notes.
Okay, is there any questions from members of the board?
Yes, Ms. Chair, I'd like to pull item 5 from the consent calendar. We can either discuss it this morning and/or this afternoon, I wish to do it, but there's been some recent correspondence, as I'm sure my colleagues are aware, as well as I had some questions about that, so.
Okay, we will schedule that to 9:45.
Okay.
Any others?
Yes, I'd like the record reflect, I'm recusing myself from item 21.
Thanks.
Potential business conflict.
Okay, I have no speaker slips from the audience on consent, so with that, is there a motion? So, second, and we will move approval of the consent calendar as amended.
Mr. Chair, I think Mike Penrose, did you have an item?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'm just, I saw you approach a mic, so maybe you want to speak up before we can vote on?
Thank you Supervisor. We are asking to drop item 40 from this agenda, we'll be bringing it back.
Mike, that's a timed item.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that, that's a timed item.
Timed item, sorry, okay. Already retired there, Mr. Penrose?
Yeah.[254.01][254.01](laughter)
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Okay. In, gentlemen, you need a hearing device behind you, too.
Okay. Unanimous vote, let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from item 21 for a potential conflict of interest.
Still, it didn't record my vote, still. Try it again. Okay, you want to try it again? I voted yes, and it came up on the board. Oh, that's my great person, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we get started with the presentations then while we deal with the technical difficulties?
Okay, sorry about that.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I voted yes on all those items, and I-
Yes.
Okay.
I noted that in the record.
I know you noted it, okay, I just want to be clear.
Item 34 is the presentation of resolution honoring Saint Ignatius Parish School Academic Decathlon Team upon winning first place in the Catholic Schools Junior High Academic Decathlon State Championships.
I'm gonna make a few comments, and then I'll ask the coaches to introduce the students and make any comments they like. First, though, Saint Ignatius Academic Decathlon Team finished first place at the State Catholic Schools Junior High Academic Decathlon. That needs an acronym, because that's too long to say, you know? The Junior High Academic Decathlon is a competition for students in 6th through 8th grade that consists of a logic quiz, a super quiz, and eight individual knowledge tests. These hardworking students, with the support and help of their coaches and parents, begin studying at the start of the school year on weekends, holidays, and recess, in addition to the normal schoolwork, and I know you all have extracurricular activities like student council and sports and service organizations. The Saint Ignatius Academic Decathlon Team first competed against 21 local Catholic Schools for the title of Sacramento Diocese Champions. Saint Ignatius has won this competition for the last 12 years in a row. In April, the team competed against 10 schools throughout California, as well as a school from the Arch Diocese of Denver, and won first place overall, among first place in the logic quiz, religion, and science, and second place in math, fine arts, social studies, third place in super quiz and literature, and fifth place in English, but first place overall. It's my pleasure on behalf of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to present each student and coaches Erin McGraw and Carlos Contreras with this resolution to recognize their tremendous accomplishment of winning the 2019 Catholic Schools State Academic Decathlon. So, Ms. McGraw, can you introduce the students? I want to give you this resolution first, and this is to honor you and the school and all of you students.
Thank you so much.
And then afterwards, I'll have the individual resolutions.
So, on our team, again, we have 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. We have Veronica Hartono, who was second place in math, she did that as a 7th grader, even though that's typically 8th grade and high school level math. Kami Alvarez did literature, and she scored 3rd place overall in the entire state. Erica Pham did fine arts, 2nd place in the entire state. Tommy Goyet did current events, and was 3rd in our entire diocese. Ariel Montevergen and Irene Kurtu are what we call our 910s, so they really specialize in logic and some of our overall super quiz categories. Super quiz is kind of like a Jeopardy-style event. MJ Gillis was social studies for 3rd year in a row, and I believe 2nd place in state. Mason Fatt did English grammar, and was 5th place in state. Griffin Malloy did science for the 3rd year in a row, and was 1st place in the entire state.
Wow.
And Kate Cogerton, for the 2nd year in a row, was 1st place in the entire state for religion. So, they're a very impressive team.[547.04][547.04](applause)
Just, I have individual resolutions for all of you, and just to make sure your parents can saw the shorter people in the back, I've been short all my life, so I know what it's like to be behind the tall people. Maybe you come up to the microphone, I'll give you the resolution, you can say who you are and what grade you're in, okay? You'll have to call the names out for me.
Okay. Veronica Hartono. Okay, if she wants to say her-
My name is Veronica Hartono, and I'm in 7th grade.
Great, congratulations Veronica, here's your resolution for your college resume.[589.04][589.04](laughter) Kami Alvarez.
My name is Kami Alvarez, and I'm in 7th grade.
Congratulations for your resolution. We'll look out behind you.
My name is Erica Pham, and I'm in 7th grade.
Great, congratulations Kami, here's your resolution.
My name is Ariel Montevergen, and I'm in 7th grade. Thank you.
I'm Tommy Goyet, and I'm in 8th grade.
Thank you, congratulations, here's your resolution.
My name is Irene Kurtu, and I'm in 6th grade.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is MJ Gillis, and I'm in 8th grade.
Great, congratulations.
My name is Mason Fatt, and I'm in 8th grade.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
My name is Griffin Malloy, and I'm in 8th grade.
Congratulations Griffin.
Thank you.
My name is Kate Cogerton, and I'm in 8th grade.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, you can all watch this at 6 o'clock on Friday night.[664.16][664.16](phone ringing) If that's my phone, would you turn it off?[667.16][667.16](laughter) Sorry, I'm not sure I turned it off.[672.16][672.16](laughter) You can watch it on television on Channel 14 at 6 o'clock on Friday night. We also have a YouTube channel.
That was a pope calling to congratulate you all, so.[684.16][684.16](laughter)
That was the president, sorry, you can take the call. So, if you, I think we're gonna take a picture, and so if you'd all come into the, up here, all people in back, throw people a roll for just a moment, all the way back here. Spread out as the world. Teachers? Do parents want to come up and have their picture taken, too? Oh, come on. Okay, thank you all very much.
Wow, congratulations.[748.16][748.16](applause)
Item 35 is the Service Award Recognizing Neng Kang for 35 Years of County Service.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. It is an honor to stand here before you to present this service award to Neng Kang for 35 years of service with the county of Sacramento. Neng began his career as an eligibility worker on January 19, 1984, at our 28th Street Office, working in the AFC program, which later became AFDC, and now is Cow Works. Neng is passionate about his family and community. As a Hmong and Laos special skills worker, he has helped with the translation of forms for the department to better serve his community. For many years, he was an active member with the Asian and Pacific Islander Caucus and assisted with Hmong New Year's activities while a member. He is the father of seven children, four girls and three boys, and as of today, he has 19 children. He remarked that one of his daughter got married recently, so that number is probably going to increase. He is the author of two books, one is The Kang Family Tree, and the other one is Detail How To on the Funeral Rituals and Traditions for the Hmong. Neng believes this will be his last appearance before the board, as he sees his retirement in the close horizon. He remains thankful for his time with the department. Neng, congratulations, and thank you for serving our community.
Thank you.[901.16][901.16](applause)
Thank you, thank you, the board, thank you, the chambers that allowed me to be here. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to my family. I have, like, my program managers, Sal Sanchez introduced me, he's my current program manager at this point. I have seven children, four daughters and three sons, they are here, in the back of the chamber here. Thank you for my family to be, support me to work all these years with the county. And first of all, I'd like to thank you, my supervisor, current supervisor, Carol Smith, for being such a good supervisor, support me all the way. My program manager, Sal Sanchez, and Donna Door, including the director and award that allowed me to work for the county Department of Human Assistance for all these years. Stepped into this department 35 years ago, and today, I'm here, thank you very much. Thank you for the Department of Human Assistance that gave me this award, to be here with the chambers, so thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, the last final, thank you for all those customers that I've been serving for the last 35 years in Sacramento County. Besides, if there's no of you all customer in Sacramento County, I won't be here today. But thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.[1001.13][1001.13](applause)
Let's have a picture of the-
Get them all up there, sorry.
What's my program manager? Do you want to take a minute?
Yeah, all the kids can come up there and take a picture.
Come down, it's your last chance.
Yeah, come on down, yeah, that's right.
So they can be on the side. All right.
14, so you'll all be on television, so, there you go.[1074.16][1074.16](laughter)
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 36 is the rename a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area, the Frank F. Cyril Recreation Area.
Chair Kennedy, thank you so much. Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. I am absolutely honored to be here today to present this item to you, requesting to rename a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area, the Frank F. Cyril Recreation Area. For those of you who are visual, I put the map up there, so you can see the area that we are renaming. Unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, family members were not able to attend today. One of our speakers will read a note from the family. Before I read these wheresthes into the record, I just want to say that I had the good fortune to work with Frank very early on in my career. He was a remarkable man. He did so many things for parks, for the American River Parkway, and truly was a wonderful partner to work with. He knew absolutely how to bring people together, to work together, to create things that we wouldn't have if he hadn't taken the role, leadership role that he did, for example, the Fair Oaks Bluff. Also, he spent many, many years working as, he was the president for Save the American River Association, and then later became president emeritus of Save the American River Association. He served on the Recreation and Park Commission for many years, and was just a kind man with a voice of logic that you could turn to, to get a good understanding of what the general population felt about parks, and how important the American River Parkway was to everyone. So I'm going to read this resolution into the record for you. Whereas Frank F. Cyril is being honored with the dedication of renaming a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area as the Frank F. Cyril Recreation Area, for his many years of distinguished and dedicated service to the people of Sacramento County. And whereas Frank F. Cyril was inducted into the California Park and Recreation Society's Hall of Honor in 2016, and the county of Sacramento joins in expressing sincere appreciation and gratitude for his hard work, personal interests, and countless contributions to the overall betterment of our community. And whereas Frank F. Cyril was appointed by the County Board of Supervisors to serve on the Recreation and Park Commission from 1973 through 1978. And whereas Frank F. Cyril saw a need for preserving and protecting the American River Parkway. To that end, he promoted bond issues and fundraising efforts for land acquisition, including preserving the public access to the Fair Oaks Overlook. He was instrumental in removing a sewage plant, trailer court, and tavern from within the boundaries of the American River Parkway. He battled in court against East Bay Municipal Utility District for over 20 years to prevent the district from diverting water from the American River through the Folsom South Canal, and was a key player in establishing a flow standard for the Lower American River. He helped prevent development of a golf course and 40-acre parking lot in the floodplain of Bushy Lake next to Cal Expo, and he formed the Lake Natoma Community Task Force to protect Lake Natoma from development. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Supervisors, county of Sacramento, state of California, on behalf of the people of Sacramento County, do hereby approve the renaming of a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area, the Frank F. Cyril Recreation Area, to honor the legacy of good work and important publications of Frank F. Cyril for his many years of distinguished service to the people of Sacramento. We do have several speakers in the audience, and of course, I believe you need to take a vote on item 2, so.
We already voted on it.
Did you vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, good, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
faux pas.
We don't let you get up there until we vote on it, okay?
Okay, good, good.
I do have some cards, and I will start by calling Assembly Member Roger Dickinson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members. It's always a pleasure to come back and see you for a few minutes. And this morning in particular, it is truly both an honor and a pleasure to be before you to support the naming of part of the Parkway in memory of Frank Cyril. I want to also, though, add that while we may just be putting Frank's name on the plaque and in the record books, it would be an oversight of a severe character to not also remember Doris's, his wife's, contributions as well. Because Frank and Doris were truly a team. A team of fierce, yet genteel advocates for and protectors of the American River Parkway. You heard in the resolution just some of the contributions that Frank and Doris made to preserving what is clearly and identifiably the jewel of Sacramento County, the American River Parkway. All of us who've had the privilege of serving on the Board of Supervisors, I think appreciate beyond measure how valuable the Parkway is to our county, and indeed to our state. It's something that we talk about wherever we go, whoever we speak with. And Frank and Doris were a major part of making sure that what we get the privilege of governing, of promoting, of taking care of as stewards, is in fact there for us today and for generations in the future. History is not just about places and dates, it's truly about the people who have built our county, who have led our communities, who have made our place where we find ourselves today to build upon for a better future. And nothing allows us better to mark the contributions of those to our history than naming specific sites in their honor. So this morning, as I said, it is an extreme honor and pleasure to support this item before you, and to thank you, to thank you for taking this action, so that generations yet to come who will enjoy and appreciate the American River Parkway just as we do today, will know that Frank Cyril was an indispensable part of what they will treasure just as we have. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. And if anything is ever named after me, I am inviting you to-[1544.91][1544.91](laughter) -make comments. Jim Geary.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Jim Geary, and I had the distinct pleasure of working with Frank Cyril for more than 30 years on the Epi's Great Race Committee, and almost as many years on Epi's Wellness Foundation. Frank was truly a Renaissance man. I don't know if many people know that Frank was a charter member of the Greatest Generation. He served in Merchant Marine as an officer aboard a freighter in the Mediterranean during the height of the African-Italian command, battles. He also was a mentor to me, as well as many other people on Epi's Great Race Committee. One thing Frank was, was meticulous. Anyone who met with Frank about any issue, Frank had his list, he'd go through it, never quarrelsome about it, usually educated you to his point of view, and by and large, Frank Frank was also an athlete. Frank spent many years on the Parkway, training, running, biking, boating, and he was also an accomplished cross-country skier well into his senior years. But most of all, I think we remember Frank as a mentor. And listening to today's agenda, I think Frank would have had two reactions. One is he would have been embarrassed that they were naming part of the trail after him. But more so, he would have been very, very proud of the Saint Ignatius young men and women that appeared earlier today. Because if there was one thing that Frank had as an abiding principle, it was for the future, the future generations. We can do nothing better than honor Frank's legacy by naming this portion of the Parkway after Frank Cyril. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Green?
My name is Stephen Green, I'm president of Save the American River Association. It seems that in this position, I'm constantly confronting new issues involving the Parkway. And when that happens, I think, what would Frank Cyril have done? He absolutely was a mentor, he was an inspiration. Working with him over the years was absolutely one of the best parts of my life. I really enjoyed it. In 1985, I was president of a homeowner association on the bluffs above Lake Natoma, and I got a call from Frank Cyril, who introduced himself and said, "Did you know that the state has just approved putting an RV park on the Lake Natoma shoreline?" And I said, "You've got to be kidding me." He says, "No." He says, "Could you get involved with me in putting an end to this?" And I did, and worked with Frank ever since. This is a wonderful tribute to name this area Frank, who accomplished so much for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ronald Suter. And Ronald Suter.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Ron Suter, 9340 Canter Drive, Elk Grove, Chairman Kennedy and Board Members. Gives me a great pleasure to address this board recommending the adoption of the resolution dedicating and renaming a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area, the Frank F. Cyril Recreation Area. I would like to thank Nav Gill, Rob Leonard, former Park Director Jeff Leatherman, and of course Liz Bellis for moving this item forward. I brought this dictionary. Oh, first I want to say, my two daughters go to St. Ignatius. And in five years, you'll see my little Alex up here in front of you. I guarantee it. And I'll be right here with them. Dictionary, if you were to look up the word Frank Cyril or find the word in the dictionary, it would be honest, passionate, and always doing the right thing for the right reason. In my many years as the park director, Frank was always very respectful of the county's ways and sometimes the slow-moving wheels of the county, but he was very passionate about making sure that he was respectful of your opinion, and he would always try to make your opinion his opinion and make it work for everybody. Make it work for the residents of the county, make it work for the lovers of the American River Parkway. I do, out of script, I got a letter from Lisa, his daughter. And it says, "We've tried to work this so that Curtis, her son, his son, and his daughter could be here. And that's what we had been working on for a couple of months." And so this is a note from Lisa about 30 minutes ago. "Ron, well unfortunately, as I predicted, my mom has developed side effects, it would be Doris, from the antibiotics that she will be taking for the next seven days, and I need to be with her full-time. I'm truly sorry, I will not be able to attend the morning meeting of the supervisors. The best thing I can do to honor my father today is to take care of my mother. Good luck this morning and thank you. Thank you for making this dream a reality for the family. Fondly, Lisa." So unfortunately, and it saddens me that she could not be here because she was very, very truly feeling about what we're doing for her. She was, I can't express the words truly how she felt. It was such an honor. Also, during my tenure as the county, I understood addressing the board and making it quick, getting done, sitting down and asking you to take a vote. So that's it. I'm sitting down, asking you to take a vote, and remember the dictionary. I'll see you in five years. Probably not, probably sooner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I actually stand corrected. We did things a little out of order in our usual business, and we do need to vote on the motion, so I will make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. And we do have comments from Board Members. Supervisor Frost.
I want to thank Liz Bellis and all the staff and everyone who was involved in creating this beautiful tribute to Mr. Frank Cyril, who I did not know. I believe he was before my time. In '73, I was in high school, but I was around. And I know about people like him. Every now and then, a champion emerges, someone who understands the importance of something and that it's worth fighting for. And they do truly make a difference in our world, but sometimes, over time, these things unfold and it goes sort of unnoticed. And so to pay tribute to his leadership and advocacy and dedication and ongoing commitment to protect and improve the American River Parkway and our community is a beautiful way to pay tribute to his life. And unfortunately, he's not here to enjoy that, but I'm glad, I'm happy for his family who can enjoy this moving forward and for all of us who can look back and remember and know things that we wouldn't have known. Those of us that weren't there wouldn't have known if it wasn't for this. So thank you all for being here, and I want to offer a special congratulations to Lisa and Curtis and the family for this tremendous honor for their father Frank Cyril.
Supervisor Tolly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would certainly echo all the comments that were major this morning and thank all those who spoke, certainly former colleague Roger Dickinson, but those who've had a close association with Frank and certainly Doris and the family over the years. And would just note that, as the comments that were shared, that I did have the opportunity to work with Frank in a couple of different capacities, certainly in my earlier years with the county, working on behalf of my predecessor Toby Johnson, in some of the years when the county was litigating the whole issue with East Bay mud as related to the take from the American River, where that point of discharge would be. Frank's leadership with the Save the American River Association, certainly with other defenders of the Parkway in this county, it was rock solid. He would make sure that this board, in his construct at the time, but certainly that the community, that he was able to reach out to, were well aware of the implications of the East Bay mud, who sought under some previous actions to take water at the Folsom South Canal, what devastation that would bring potentially to the American River Parkway. And along with that, though, as I think Liz Bellis noted and certainly embedded in the resolution, his work on a lot of different fronts, to see to it that the land areas were protected along the Parkway and certainly that the interests of those who would recreate and enjoy, and I think for the time that he was here, but also recognizing, I think he recognized very clearly in his wisdom, that the Parkway would be here for all time and that what he could do in his efforts over the course of the many decades was to protect it from intrusion, but also uses that would be incompatible. I know it was referenced in the resolution that the golf course that was proposed on the Cal Expo property, if I remember right, the then General Manager of Expo was a general by name of Kirk Breed. He was famous for wearing the cowboy hat and being a little bit of a cowboy in his approach, I think. And I think Frank, along with obviously others, Sarah and certainly other interested community members, took that on head-on and made it very clear to the general public that Bushy Lake and the surrounding environments of the American River on the southern edge of the Cal Expo property were important for a lot of different reasons, and they weren't, you know, necessarily to be developed for uses that might have a recreational aspect to them, but certainly wouldn't be compatible with the, I think, the true intent of the Parkway. I would just say too, that his approach, as was noted by many others this morning, was very respectful, but very, very firm. I think Roger described it, Dickinson, as being fierce, and he can be fierce at times and yet, and never being disrespectful and being very passionate at this dais, but in other settings in the community. And his, I think, persistence and perseverance and his ability to reach out to others, as was mentioned, to get them to rally around a particular issue led to many, many different things that were described here as related to successes that really did, I think, help to tie together and knit together the Parkway and what we have as is described as a jewel. And I would just note one other thing, that I think it was actually for more than 30 years as related to the lawsuit on the East Bay mud. And, you know, that took a lot of time and effort, and there were times, I think, when others might have settled for something less. And Frank made it very clear, along with obviously Sarah and others, that this was not going to be the way that things were going to end up. And so, you know, we can be truly grateful for his efforts. I guess lastly, I would just say that, as commented on, that Steve Green said that, you know, he oftentimes reflects on what would Frank Cyril do, and so maybe the moniker at the new recreation area can be WWFCD, and people can figure it out for themselves what would Frank Cyril do. Nonetheless, this is a tremendous tribute and a legacy to him and his family, but to this community, and I think the board certainly took the right approach here this morning.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to applaud our staff for their diligence and attention to what I think is obviously a very appropriate tribute to someone very special in our community. So I want to express my thanks to Liz and others who helped make this possible. I want to thank those that are in attendance today, and if the family's watching or has a chance to see the telecast later. I want to certainly express the fact that we understand they have other, they have to be with their other family members today, and we appreciate what they're doing. I think the words that were mentioned earlier about being with Doris is the right tribute in Frank's name, and I think he would want that to be the case. So the things that I'm reflecting on today most about this have to do not just with my friendship with Frank, which had blossomed certainly in the course of campaigning for office initially. In fact, it was one of the first meetings, meeting requests I had as a candidate back in 2009, was from Frank to come join him for a great cup of coffee at his River Park home, and we had a great discussion. And he, I left with a binder full of information. But, you know, it was really the first time during the course of my effort to seek the voters' confidence that I had a chance to hear from someone that I knew before, because of course he worked very closely with my late father on issues relative to the Parkway. But he was very giving of his time. He had such a great institutional knowledge about public policy and how it affected the Parkway. And he wanted to have a candidate that was hoping to serve on this board to come in with that understanding. And I just hope that it's apparent to most, that not just me, but others on this board, that the value that we have for the Parkway is a reflection of many things, not the least of which is the fact that we hear from a great advocacy community for our Parkway here in Sacramento, and Frank was really the plow blade of that. And, you know, in addition to our many discussions about public policy in the Parkway, we also had a chance to discuss fly fishing and the best techniques and flies to use for different species of fish in the American River. And so I really developed a very strong bond with Frank, a great amount of respect for him. I can't think of a better way to acknowledge his legacy and his contribution to the community and to this particular asset that is so unique and valuable to us as a region than to have his name grace this recreation area. So I know it was a team effort to get us to this point, and I look forward to the days, weeks, months, and years ahead where we can all go visit that recreation area, enjoy the Parkway, and certainly reflect on the legacy of Frank Cyril.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I won't repeat all the previous accolades, but I met Frank when I first joined this board, and you could always tell when something was really important to Sarah because Frank came down and stayed through the lengthy meetings that we have and got up and spoke. And that showed to me his dedication to the principles of Sarah. He was involved for 49 years. I can't imagine that there are too many people that have their cause and run it for 49 years. I just found that to be amazing. Two other things that stood out to me about his work, one, that he was in the Ironman race for 60 years old and over, which is amazing, good constitution. And the other one that was really important to me is how he worked with us to keep East Bay mud from taking too much water out of the American River. And that went on for 20 years, and that also shows the dedication, and I think his work really helped Sacramento County fight that battle over the long term and made the situation better. So I think it's very fitting to name this area for Frank, not too far from where he lived, and thank all of you that worked on it to bring it to us today.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our presentations for the renaming of the recreation area, and thank you all for being here and your continued support of the county and the Parkway. We're all, you know, better off because of the work that Frank did, so thank you for being here.
Mr. Chair, if I just could ask on that, and again, assuming maybe the availability of both the children and Doris, and hopefully wishing her a recovery, you know, it would maybe a dedication, I assume there's going to be some dedication in the field, and I think with, you know, some appropriate notice and so forth, that would be great if we could, you know, maybe make sure that occurs.
County Executive will work with Park Staffs.
Thanks.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back to item five from the consent calendar. This is the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Executive Director Reporting Relationship.
I requested to have it. It may be that staff wants to add something, but I know we received some correspondence as recently as late yesterday afternoon on this, but even prior to, and I shared this with, in my briefing yesterday with the County Executive, I expressed some concerns about how this, again, it's property on the agenda, but what necessitated this proposal. And in my reading, obviously, a very brief staff report, somebody had done some work around it, I trust, with staff at the Housing Redevelopment Agency, but I would just say that a couple of things struck me, and maybe I'll speak to the correspondents first, that apparently, I guess, concerns were shared by the City of Sacramento, and in the letter that they wrote to Board Members yesterday, it was indicated that concern's been raised and that they'd sent a letter, which they attached, to county staff, and that they had asked, and this again was authored by the City Attorney Susan Alcala Wood, had asked that their concerns be forwarded to our board and were advised, and again, somebody can correct the record if this isn't correct, were advised that they would not be sharing the city's letter. That, for one, troubles me, that if we have correspondence and whether it's done in the context of some staff-to-staff work, if there are concerns by our partner, we are joint powers authorities, this has existed for nearly 40 years, that if in fact, as it relates to the executive director and all those that are employed under, in this case, in her supervision, but in the supervision of that particular officer of the agency, that our partner, if they shared information they wanted to be, make sure our board had for consideration, and this item is on the agenda today, that troubles me. But nonetheless, I think they raise issues that are pertinent to what we were being asked to do today. Apparently there's some difference as to what reporting to means, but I will just say that, in my view, as a member of this board, but one who, again, like all of us on this board, you know, wears the hat of the Housing Authority and the County Redevelopment Agency, that I believe the reporting relationship has been a proper one. If there were concerns about either evaluations or communication or transmittal of information, then I think properly, those certainly either individually or collectively could be taken up with the executive director. But I will also say, and say this very, very clearly, that I don't believe in the case of this joint powers authority that we need to have a filter for information that would come to this board. And again, that's no slight to our County Executive and his office. Again, they do good work and they oversee many different items, but that the Housing Redevelopment Agency and the Housing Authority of County Sacramento and the City of Sacramento, that relationship is between the two bodies. Obviously, we have legal counsel and executive staff that will recommend and weigh in on any matter that comes before this board. But again, I'm very concerned that what was detailed briefly, so there wasn't a lot of explanation behind it, what didn't really, in my view, bring to bear, if there's some issue that we need to talk about, then that's appropriate for this board, either in this context or in the context of evaluation of the executive director, but that it hasn't been persuasively put forth to me, and certainly in the context of the communication we've received from the city, that this is an action that we ought to take. And so, you know, for that reason, I don't... And so, you know, for that reason, I don't support what's before us, but secondly, I think it's appropriate that we have a fuller discussion around this issue. So I'll leave it with that for right now.
Supervisor Searle.
Thanks. So I understand there's probably some folks that want to address the board, so I look forward to hearing from others. And I have to start by expressing my strong agreement with the comments and the rationale that was just expressed by my colleague, Mr. Nantoli. I guess, you know, I have several concerns, not the least of which is that we're being told by a sister agency who's a partner in a JPA that we are getting cherry picked information in the form of written correspondence. That in itself is troubling, just from a process standpoint. But when I read the background section of the very brief board letter, it says in an effort to best utilize Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency and county organizational capacity and expertise for administration of ongoing programs, that that is the, that's the basis for this. And so I guess I question if this is really to somehow enhance expertise and efficiency of capacity, I don't know who else is more expert, quite frankly, than the professional executive staff of the, of the agency. And so I guess I openly question how having a change in the organizational structure where there is a quote unquote "reporting" to the CEO, the CEO's office is actually going to enhance that objective, if that's in truth the objective here. So I guess I have those two general concerns, is that the process that got us to this point is troublesome for me and I openly question the need for this in the first place.
Thank you. I'm going to take the public comments and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. First is Cassandra Jennings.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Cassandra Jennings and I'm president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. I oppose the changes in the reporting of SHRA. The changes in the function of the JPA really diminishes the authority of SHRA. As I recall, the JPA and Joint Powers Authority of the city and county was really designed to really enhance the community services and work together in partnership. I realize that the housing authority and community development is still here, but redevelopment is gone. But there's still a lot of work to do in the community and I'm out there every day. The Urban League works closely with SHRA, the Housing Authority and its residents all across this county. Sometimes the residents are units that are under the county housing authority, but they're actually in the city of Sacramento. And sometimes the residents are with the, get the Housing Choice vouchers, old Section Eight, and then they're located throughout. And we're working with them to get them ready for housing and for jobs and for, and to start businesses. SHRA has been able to deliver it effectively and efficiently. This proposed change interrupts and disrupts the communities, the very communities that we serve and work in every day. In fact, I think if anything, and to reflect on the staff report, we should be increasing their authority in really communities that are very vulnerable right now that we see every day. The message that this sends is that you're devaluing the community and repositioning one of your number one assets that out there in the community, working every day to make it better. I will agree that communication is important. And as I look around, and I don't get here as often as I should, I know that at least four fifths of your staff over here can work with it, because I communicated with them well when I was in other positions, that their communication can be effective and powerful without changing the reporting requirements. I strongly ask you to not approve this as written and that to work with the community in order to achieve even better objectives for our community overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ardell Harrison.
Good evening, County Board of Supervisors. I'm Ardell Harrison. I'm the Vice President of the NAACP. Betty Williams was not able to make it, so she prepared a letter for me to read to you guys and also to give you copies of it, so I'll do as I've been instructed. As President of the Great Sacramento NAACP branch, it concerns me that the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting today, County Executive Navdeep Gill will make a calculated and unprecedented attempt to assert the full authority of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Executive Director LaShiel Dozer by recommending, by consent on an agenda, that the executive director report directly to the county executive instead of the board. SHRA is a joint power created by a resolution of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors in the city in 1981 with the JPA agreement executed in 1982. Under the agenda of the JPA, with the regional transit, SMUD, SETA, and other county, the executive director does not report to a county executive or a city manager. The primary purpose of the JPA is to provide greater efficiency to the county and the city by utilizing common staff to administrate multimillion dollar federally funded programs and initiative on behalf of the city and county. SHRA serves as the housing staff and housing authority for both entities, serving more than 14,000 low income families. It is the fifth largest housing authority in the state. Ms. Dozer has served SHRA executive director since 2008, far longer than any of her predecessors. She is accountable for four key departments, housing development, finance and administration, 18 divisional functions and administrations, the agency $192.7 million budget for 2019 with the workforce of 236 employees. She also oversees and manages $635 million in capital assets, cash, and loan portfolios. Given Ms. Dozer's leadership and success on behalf of the city and the county of Sacramento, the exposure and respect she has earned at the national level, the intent of relegating her executive directors to a subordinate of a county executive is highly questionable, particularly in the light of the county's dismal lack of diversity at this department's head level. As the highest ranking African-American female in SHRA, I would hate to think that this is an attempt to minimize her vision, mission, and more importantly, her power. This is not the first time that the county executive has attempted to shackle Ms. Dozer and her agency. In 2017, the county executive, with the support of supervisor Patrick Kennedy, led an unsuccessful attempt to restructure SHRA. This time, Patrick Kennedy is the chairman of the board of supervisor and it's very concerning that the matter of such reaching implications would be allowed to be present as a consent item. Clearly, this raises transparency and ethical concerns and the chairman should be held accountable for allowing this recommendation to be present, presented in this manner. The county board of supervisors should consider the serious ramifications of such a drastic, unnecessary, and unprecedented change in the historical reporting relationship between the board and the executive director and the manner in which this recommendation has been printed. This is, this issue should be discussed publicly and the Greater Sacramento NAACP and many others will be present to express our concerns. We, the NAACP, want this item pulled off the consent calendar and have it available for public discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Macworthy.
People on this issue, if you look at Channel 14, say, three times out of a week, you heard me speak on this. When I speak on this, too many changes in policy have gone on. I was here when Ann Moore was here. Now that same time, it's collapsed on the Dozer, this lady that's here now. This is what's happening here when you're playing synagogue and church politics with nonprofits. This is what's happening here. We see some things coming down the line about some money here and it's at city level when it should have been changed years and years ago. We got some information and investigation that we're going to turn over, that I'm working with the lady on. Who reported to who? Now, when this thing came in, it was the League of California Cities. Now, who is the mayor of Sacramento? That he was in legislation when the League of California Cities done the millions and millions of dollars of lobbying to take 11% of property tax, which would be their part, for redevelopment. Nobody said a word. I asked about the case that Gerald Brown filed. What was he after? He stole Oakland's money to become governor again. Nobody said a word. I'm trying to show that where things went down here on property in the black neighborhood, nobody said a word but me. How can you rezone my light commercial to residence and never have a real meeting? Tess Cede's wife was out there in Deppus Heights. She talks about taking the fella, what they done is take the fella investigation clause out. That's how they done that. This have been a twist at city level and when you play the numbers they played from the board of education and who you got on these boards, this is what you will wind up with. Too many, much money going out to nonprofit organizations and the real people not understanding what is going out here.
Could you wrap up, Mr. Worthy?
Yeah, you can't, you can't have housing overlap education. Housing and education is two different things. You allowing many welfare setup within the housing when the housing should be restricted to housing and not to education.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's the final card I have from the public. Is there any others in the audience that would like to address this issue? Okay, then we will bring it back to the board. Is there comments from the board? Okay, I will, I will make a comment. First of all, it's unfortunate the personalization that's occurred because this isn't about, in my mind, any individual, whether they're sitting up here or in the audience. This is about, in my mind, accountability and government accountability and transparency. The comparison has been made of SHRA as a JPA with other JPAs that we all sit on, solid waste authorities, transportation authority, regional sanitation, and the list goes on and on. Tremendous difference between this organization and those organizations. One is they meet about 10 times a year, some more. SHRA's JPA has met, to my knowledge, once in 30 years and it was very, very difficult to get that meeting, I know, because as was said, I was largely a proponent of having a JPA meeting. Because if the JPA doesn't meet, where's the accountability? We are ultimately, as members of the JPA, responsible for the management of the organization, ultimately. That can't happen if they don't meet regularly and I don't, and I have not seen a way of getting those regular meetings to take place. I believe that we are left too often in the dark of what's going on at SHRA as a board. I can't speak for my colleagues necessarily, but I will say that I feel that way as someone who represents an area that is probably as impacted as any other area by the work of SHRA. There's been very difficult times I've had at, at being able to, for lack of a better phrase, manage the responsibilities that I have as a member of the JPA. Recently, it was very, very difficult and we're still having the ongoing discussions and, and issues on Stockton Boulevard and SHRA and successor agency property that was the home of a homeless encampment. It wasn't until I pushed very hard on our county staff to get involved that the situation became better and it's still not ideal by any means, any stretch of the imagination. There have been other instances within District Two in which it's been very difficult as me, responsible ultimately for the people that live in District Two, to get properties cleaned up where there was mold. It took months and months to get anything done. We had people living in dangerous situations where their health was at risk and even worse allegations that could be more serious than that. That's not the kind of accountability that I expect of myself and that my constituents expect of me. And that's why, this has nothing to do with Ms. Dozer, who I think she and I have a fine relationship and I have said on many occasions, very publicly, I respect the work that, that Ms. Dozer does. It's not about Ms. Dozer. This is about my role as being responsible to the constituents and the people of Sacramento County and specifically District Two. I think that this reporting will make it more easy for us as board members to have input on the way SHRA is managed and the way that it serves the community. And that's why I have been a proponent of this. It's not taking away authority. It's not a power grab. It's not changing the structure of the JPA. It's strictly providing greater access to the people who live in District Two, to what happens and the other districts in the county, to what happens in county SHRA projects. So that's why I will support this motion today. Any other comments?
I'd like to hear from county council.
Okay, I'm sorry, but Supervisor Frost, I didn't see Supervisor Frost.
I did have a conversation with county council and it might be appropriate to hear from county council before I comment, if you would please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and board members. This is a very narrow issue, in my opinion, in my review, and it does not change the role, responsibility, or requirements of the executive director of SHRA. If I can just briefly address the issue of providing information to the board and what is contained in the letter from the city attorney, there'd been no contact directly with me and the city attorney. It was one of the deputy attorneys and a discussion that took place on Friday. And my communication at that point was really willingness to discuss and an indication that my view, my opinion, my research indicates that this does not impact in any way the JPA itself. It was an internal reporting procedure that the, this board maintains authority to decide. And I'd be happy to talk, but that this was, I wasn't going to change that opinion and I'd be open to seeing any legal authority that they wanted to provide. Later that day, I received a meeting invite that was to meet with the city attorney and the attorney for SHRA. And attached to that was a letter to me, directed to me, which you have seen, that's been provided, and it was asking me, as county council, to communicate to you, the board, what the city attorney's opinion was. This was already an agendized matter, so I called that line counsel, the deputy city attorney that I'd spoken with originally, and asked about the meeting. I'd be more than willing to meet, I'm happy to meet on, on Monday, but that I didn't see it as my role to communicate their disagreement with my opinion, that they, they know very well how to do that. And this was an agendized meeting, it's a public meeting, and that they could communicate that. And very clearly, they know how to do that because you did receive a letter from the city attorney indicating what their position was. There was no intent to keep information from the board by any means. I didn't see it as my role to communicate the city attorney's legal opinion. That meeting for Monday was canceled with no comment, with no communication to me. I would have been more than happy to discuss with the city attorney what her questions were and to be willing, I did speak with Mr. Lambin, the attorney. And to be willing, I did speak with Mr. Lambin, the attorney for SHRA. We respectfully disagreed, and you've seen his letter. But that certainly was in no way trying to keep information from the board. And I hope you understand that. It was my view that, given that this was already agendized, it was a public meeting, that they were certainly capable of providing their opinion to this board at that time.
So I'll just make some quick comments. And number one, there were some comments, public comments, that indicated this is unprecedented. I don't believe it's unprecedented. I do think there are other jurisdictions who have their housing authority report to the county executive and not, you know, or keep the county executive in the communications. I, my understanding, based on my conversation with County Council, is that this does not usurp LaChelle's authority. It doesn't disrupt access to the board. She can still meet with the board. It doesn't violate the JPA agreement. And it really, in my view, it is an attempt for us to try to improve communications. And a lot of times, you may not realize it, but there's five of us going in different directions, and one person can have a conversation, and we may not all be in that conversation. But when there's a conversation with the county executive, he brings us all into, keeps us in the know about his activities. And so, in my point, in my view, this will help improve communications that apparently have been challenged over time. And for that reason, I'm going to support this.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate certainly County Council's explanation and as the events, and certainly as you saw them roll out. We didn't have the benefit, obviously you've reviewed, we had no benefit of any legal opinion. Obviously, you weighed in, you or your office on this. That's the normal review process we have here. I guess I would just say, though, to that, that if someone transmits information and asks if that could be shared with the board, you know, whether it's blessed by you or not, I mean, that's a very reasonable thing to do because what it does require, then they write a separate letter, attach the information of communication. That's more procedural than not. I'm not going to argue over that as to, you know, why, you know, you chose to do it, to explain that. I guess I want to bring this back, though, to the point that's being made here. And that is, is that what is reporting, reporting to? Yeah, I'll tell you what I think that means. It's not just communicating and telling the county exec that, you know, the agency's working on this or that. It means that, and I used the word earlier, it's filtering, it's channeling, because that means everything goes through the executive's office. And then, again, this is not personalized to Nav or Robert LaChelle. That's what that means. Reporting to means you report to. And that if we have a normal structure in this county, as early as department heads, which report to, that's the structure we use, all those staff reports, they all come through the executive's office, are reviewed and agendized. That's different than more communication. And I think the accountability is there, I'll just say that. If, you know, and I can appreciate frustration and situations that are described by the chair and maybe by others on this board. But if those are issues, then whether the JPA board meets in its entirety, or we as a board have the ability to meet with the executive director, we can even do that in closed session. I don't know that we've done an evaluation or a performance. I think, knowing LaChelle in this case, she's always been very willing to do that. And if we have concerns about that, then we ought to do that, not just individually but collectively, because we operate as a board in our leadership roles in this, in this county. But I will say that I think this is more than just improving communications. I think this is a restructuring in the way that it will require reporting up through a chain of command, through certainly the executive, but deputy executive officers. And that does, that's a big change. That's a change that is more than just better communication or better accountability. And so, for those reasons alone, let alone, I think, having a broader public discussion about what it is our concerns are, how we might deal with that in the context of the executive director, and our role both as members of the board supervisors and directors on the county housing authority, and what remains of any redevelopment portions of that, and certainly with the JPA. And again, I concur. If the JPA wanted to meet more frequently, that's not a task that's without certainly a lot of challenges, but nonetheless, we could do that. But for this to be, I think it's couched in a very simplified fashion, but I think the implications are far greater than what is being revealed here today. And I would be willing to bet that if we take this action, it changes significantly the reporting structure and the information flow and the scheduling of agenda items and the accountability. And that may be seen in some folks' eyes as being better or worse, but I think this is a significant change, and I'm not just going to sit here and wordsmith it and kind of be placated by the fact that, well, this is very simple. I think it changes the relationship between this board, future boards, and executive director currently, and future executive directors, if that's what this board wants. And we're certainly, I guess, able to do that under the legal advice that we receive here today. But I do not intend to support this. I think we ought to drop this item if we want to form a board committee to work with our city council members and/or have our county executive with the, working with the city manager and the executive director of SHRA. That would be an approach that certainly would be acceptable, but I don't intend to support. I think this changes significantly and believe this is, you know, this is a milestone moment for the agency.
Thank you. Supervisor Cern.
Thank you. So I guess I'll just put a little finer point on some of the comments that Supervisor Nattoli just shared. First of all, our County Council said that you don't see it as your role to share the city attorney's position. And I guess I just respectfully but forcefully disagree with that because when you're talking about the JPA and you have a sister jurisdiction as part of that JPA, and there's communication about something as important as this, and then judgment is applied and it's not shared with us, that raises red flags for me, quite frankly. I don't know what harm is done by sharing information. In fact, it seems to me that that is kind of part and parcel of the duty of County Council. So I just disagree with the Council's comment about that. As to reporting and what that means, we received another communication from SHRA's attorney about that very subject. And maybe, maybe this is semantics, I don't know. But without clarification and a clear definition of reporting as enhanced communication versus adjusting the hierarchy of executive administration and decision-making, I am certainly not prepared to support the motion today. And I would agree with Supervisor Nattoli. If, you know, there's a will on this board to take a deep breath and perhaps, you know, whether it's a committee or having a deeper dive on what reporting actually means and coming back to the board, fine. But as is, as it's been teed up today, which I think is, quite frankly, to be very honest, extremely sloppy, I'm not willing to support it.
Okay, that's Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I found this conversation confusing from the standpoint of we're talking about things that aren't really at issue. The city attorney certainly knows how to communicate with the board members. I got four copies of this letter, so I know they know how to communicate with us, and to have discussion hinge somewhat on that is odd in my mind. And I think that the letter that was written was left out some key facts and perhaps changed them. So from that standpoint, I don't agree with the letter that was written. The city certainly knows how to communicate directly with us. The difficulty I've always had with SHRA is the lack of oversight. And I've always had a great relationship with SHRA. I understand some have not. It probably depends on what district you represent and whether the things that need to get done, get done. But the organization, in my view, is somewhat opaque. And this is not about individuals, it's about trying to make the agency a better place. And I think we would get more action that was desired by the board of supervisors in our districts if we had that relationship of who it reports to go to the county executive. So that being said, I'm sympathetic to the comment that maybe there hasn't been enough public discussion or discussion with, yeah, public discussion, I'll just call it that. So Patrick, would you be open to continuing this for a more discussion?
It's not my preference, but I would be open to it, yes. I mean, I just to address that, I guess, that we have been talking about this for a couple of years at least. I mean, there has been, you know, quite a bit of discussion about this. I don't know, I don't know what it changes.
Yeah.
I think we'll be in the same place, and that's.
Yeah, I agree. But I think part of the objection today seems to be on, I'd like the discuss, I'd like the decision that is made not to be accused of having been open enough.
That's fair.
And since this seems to have an overriding view that the city attorney is, about the city attorney, I don't, I don't think that adds anything to the discussion. So if I, that's what I would suggest, is that we put it off for a couple of weeks and have a more nuanced discussion.
Is that a motion?
Sure, that's a motion.
Chair will second. We have a motion in a second to continue for when?
We can, for a couple of weeks, we would be out at May 21st.
May 21st.
I don't think that's.
I'm sorry. That's one week. I'm sorry. The next meeting would be June 4th.
It'll be June 4th. Is there time on the agenda? We can.
Can we just not give a time right now?
That's fine.
Yeah, I guess I would ask County Council, you know, do you think you can get the city attorney to return a phone call and have a discussion one-on-one and then possibly have more discussion with interested parties?
I'm confident that could happen.
Okay, all right. So.
Before we vote, Supervisor Nattoli.
Yes, since it looks like we're to continue this, I think some better understanding for the purpose, and I appreciate the comments by Supervisor Peters relative to public discussion on this, have some better understanding what report to means.
Yeah.
And again, at least as Mr. Leonard and Mr. Gill see that, and certainly as our County Council sees that, because, again, you know, what does that mean? What does that mean in practical terms? What does it mean procedurally? Because, again, I was pretty emphatic on what I think it means, but there may be a difference on that, but I would like to, when this comes back, to have a more robust staff report that really lays out what that means and doesn't just reference a section out of the JPA and then says, you know, there's no fiscal impacts and that it doesn't change anything. Because I'm not convinced that it doesn't. I think it changes things significantly. And so I want to know that. I want, I want the public to know what it is that we think this does relative to the relationship and accountability and processing and all the things that, again, I think are embedded in that discussion. And so I think that's what needs to be in a report that comes back. And if June 4th is too soon for that, I would suggest that we're going to be writing the budget, to your question, Mr. Chair, about agendas. Again, it doesn't have to be put off indefinitely, but I would think that we want to give this adequate time to make sure that we have that information for our consideration, but certainly for the public's consideration. So I might suggest we might go a little longer on the continuance. Thanks.
Supervisor Peters.
Just, I agree that we, the question has been brought up about what reports to means, and I think that needs to be laid out, and, you know, if there would be any different meeting status and that kind of thing, a little more work on the staff report. So I'd include that in my motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And, oh, I'm sorry. And I think it's going to take longer than June, whatever it was, maybe the.
I'd like to shoot for June 4th.
Oh, okay, all right.
And, you know, if it comes back that it just wasn't enough time, then.
Okay.
We'll appropriately.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for being here. Next item, please.
Item 37 is the public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for the Parkside Village subdivision within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dorothy Codani, and I'm a senior civil engineer with the County Engineering Division. And I'm here to present the item as just was read into the record by the clerk. The Parkside Village subdivision is located along Waterman Road, approximately 1,000 feet south of Florin Road between Elk Grove Florin and Bradshaw Roads. The subdivision proposes 95 residential lots with a neighborhood park. In response to a rezone condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the benefit category change process for County Service Area Number 1, which provides street and safety light services. Therefore, a notice and a ballot were mailed to the property owner on March 28th. This item proposes a change from the safety light only category, which currently has an annual service charge of $2.56 to the enhanced street and safety light category, which has an annual residential service charge of $47.96. So if there are no questions for your, from the, from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider testimony, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Are there any questions from the board? Then we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and so give the direction.
Okay, we've received one ballot from the legal owner, family real property LP, parcel number 0660070056. Site address, Florin Road, Sacramento, California, 95829. And the vote is yes, in favor of the proposed change.
Thank you very much.
We have no protests therefore. Is there a motion?
Yeah, okay. Do we need to read anything else into the record?
Yes, thank you very much, Supervisor Nattoli. In the resolution, there are a couple of fill-ins that I can read into the record. Section 2 states that at the close of the hearing, the board had received no written protests, there are written protests which the board finds and determines to not constitute a majority protest. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition. And with that, I ask that you, board, adopt the resolution.
Okay, so move.
Mr. Chair. All right, that's a second.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For item 38, I do need a motion to drop this item. This is the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program 2019 Update.
Is there a motion?
So when we drop this, when do we anticipate to come back?
It could be as much as two to three months, Supervisor Nattoli. There's a revision that's been requested of the financing plan for additional infrastructure to be added to that, and we're in the process of doing.
Additional what?
Additional infrastructure to be added to the, to that particular financing plan. And as such, it'll need to be looked at what the infrastructure is, as well as outreach one more time with it, and then completion of that finance, revised financing plan.
Okay. If I could, Mr. Chair, just on that mic, then we have item 39, which is the follow-on item. And I know there was some integration that was trying to be achieved between the financing plans and the infrastructure plans and so forth. So does the continuance or dropping this item for several months to look at whatever, you know, will be either included or brought forward for our consideration, does that in any way affect what's before us on item 39?
It does not, Supervisor Nattoli.
Okay. All right, then I would move we drop item 38 and look forward to getting it back in 60, 90 days, I guess.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 39 is the Florin Vineyard Community. Item 39 is the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program Implementation. The environmental determination is exempt. It's also the approval of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program and the new Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Schedule. You are also introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 16.85 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the Establishment of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fees, waiving reading and continuing to May 21st for adoption. You're also introducing a second ordinance amending Chapter 16.83, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code, revising the Vineyard Fee Program boundaries, waiving reading and continuing to May 21st for adoption.
Kamal Atwal with the Special Districts, I'm a senior civil engineer in the section. I'll be presenting this item today. These were the recommended actions that were read into the record. Background on the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, this plan was approved in December of 2010, and with the approval of the plan, there was a public facilities financing plan that was prepared that identified the infrastructure needs and also the existing programs that were in place at the time, and also proposed the, proposed programs that goes with the approval. The area currently contains 3,872 acres. It's anticipated to have 8,000, over 8,000 residential units, which include single-family and multifamily, and 322 acres of non-residential uses, which has industrial, office, and commercial. Today's presentation, county staff has been working on the fee program implementation effort to implement the funding mechanism identified in the financing plan. The fee program effort was coordinated with the Florin Vineyard stakeholders, county departments, regional transit, and South Gate Recreational Park District. The proposed fee program includes funding for roadway, park, and transit facilities, and the fee program, nexus study was prepared by the county consultants, and burden of the infrastructure cost is spread among the development in the Florin Vineyard Community Plan area. This is the boundary and the, for the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, to the north is Elder Creek, it wraps around the North Vineyard Station Community Plan, and north-south roadways are South Watt, Elk Grove Florin, and on the east side, north-south roadway is Bradshaw Road. Florin Road goes east-west, Elder Creek, and then Gerber Road. These are, that's the map for the program facilities and the roadway component of the CIP. We're widening Elk Grove Florin, South Watt, to six lanes within the plan, as well as going up north to Kefir Road. Bradshaw Road within the plan allowed plant furnages, as well as off-site going north to Kefir Road to six lanes. And in Elder Creek, same thing, onsite, six lanes, and Florin Road within the plan is six lanes along the project boundaries and within the project. And west of the plan, we're going to six lanes up to Florin Perkins.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just a question before you leave the, the slide there. So, on Elder Creek, you show the, I guess, the six-lane section, but you also show, it looks like it go, it goes down to four lanes, west of Bradshaw for a segment, I guess, to Waterman there, and then also, again, slides back down as you get closer to South Watt. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, because the plan area doesn't front on that side, so there's no frontage for the plan area, that's why the frontage lane is not in there. It will be included in the West Jackson plans, because that, that plan area belongs to that area.
Okay, so how do you avoid the sawtooth approach then? And maybe you anticipated that question from me, but that, you know, we work very, very hard to not, if we're going to do logical segments, whether they be two-lane segments or four-lane segments, or ultimately six lanes, they usually build out that outside lane as for the development. But how do you avoid that? So, assuming you had that level of development along Elder Creek, that you don't, you know, you, you compress down to the older two-lane section, because that's all you got on the north side right now, you basically have a two-lane road. So, what do we use to guard against that? West Jackson is still somewhere off in the distance, and we haven't even seen the development plans, let alone the financing plan, that would follow behind that. So, what's the answer, should we see the necessity to widen that road in advance of a West Jackson financing plan? I'm sure West Jackson will have its own set of priorities, and I'm not so sure Elder Creek's going to be at the top of the list, so how, how do we address that?
The Florin Vineyard Community Plan area, I believe, doesn't have the mitigation to do six lanes. It's, they have a condition of approval to do six lanes along their project furnages, so that's why that segment that is off-site to the community plan is not included as the outside travel lane. But it is captured in the SETDF Regional Program, so if there is a need, that county can step in and fix that issue.
Yeah, Mike. Supervisor, there is a, there's a nuance that's built into your question, obviously. And so, within the plan area, the logical segment issue is addressed, it's, it's conditioned a certain way. And really what's being highlighted here is that we're on the boundary of a, of the plan area that doesn't have the obligation of the plan area to build that north side, is basically. And, and as such, this particular action today won't provide any guarantee about the delivery of that outside lane, as well as how that'll get managed through a logical segment piece. I think fundamentally, that's what's there.
Okay.
When other plan areas come in, or other traffic impacts hit that road, then we'd be having to look to those funding sources as implementing that outside lane, that whole segment, so.
But, but four lanes is provided for.
That's correct. Yeah, that's, and that's what this plan area's obligation is. So, it is unique, these boundary conditions do present, over time, some unique considerations that we're going to have to potentially address depending upon the development pattern.
Okay, the other thing is, is you have smaller fronting properties west of Bradshaw on Elder Creek, you know, again, so they might be part of a Jackson plan area, but, you know, there are people's homes that are there, and, you know, that, that doesn't happen overnight, a lot of folks continue to stay there, so the ability to build out that outside lane, should it be needed, obviously doesn't occur if you have the financing plan.
Understood. And as such, it could come back to the, the County White Transportation Development Fee Program, which is what Kamal referenced, as another option to deal with that in the future.
Okay, just one other question if I could, real quickly. So, then on the Gerber, Gerber piece, where we, again, I think certainly credit to Bob Davison and Water Resources, and Mike, you were Director of Transportation at the time, we put the center meeting in the right location for future widening of Gerber Road, and certainly as my colleagues Supervisor Kennedy and Serna know, we're seeing increased traffic movement along that segment. What is the approach here? Because again, that, that borders on another, another district as well, so how do we make sure that Gerber Road gets done? Because it's not in a four-lane configuration, certainly all the way across there, and you've got smaller fronting properties.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
That's okay.
So, that's part of the North Vineyard Finance Plan Area, is that's right? Yes, and so, when that plan finally gets adopted, which it'll be back soon, that'll be the other plan that will be needing to be looked at, looking at its prioritization and its implementation for that.
Okay, so just let me understand, that was kind of my earlier question about continuing last item. So, the coordination is there in the plan elements, you're looking at doing some other work around the item we just dropped, but from the standpoint of Gerber Road and what it means to a logical, not just logical segment, but logical build-out, meeting traffic demands and, you know, congestion in the area and so forth, that's, that's all coordinated? Because, I mean, that was one of the things I thought we might see with these documents, is how, you know, all those things integrate? Because you've, you've modified on the financing plans, if I recall correctly, you know, you had big segments, because some plans would be for others, and now you're trying to true that up and make sure the fees are reflective of what's needed, but also that the, the segments get built, and that the assimilation of money and accumulation of money meets the capital improvement program, and obviously adjusts itself to other traffic patterns that may develop accidents or otherwise that we need to address more immediately than was anticipated in the plan. So, that's, that's all being integrated then?
That's correct.
Okay, so Vineyard Springs, North Vineyard Station, Florin Vineyard Gap.
Yes, and primarily what's happening is the obligations for those various, that various infrastructure is being put into those various financing plans, right? And then to the extent that we have the ability to coordinate and collect money in each one of those plans.
Right.
And deliver those things in a, in a consistent logical manner is what we're going to try to achieve. We, what we haven't done is we haven't consolidated all the plans into one overall plan, where you could then say, we're going to require that, that the money is available, that's in the whole plan, that will be put into an individual segment. That's part of the nature, the way these were approved. But in terms of the coordination, it has been, it has been done through.
Okay, maybe offline a briefing at some juncture, not immediately, but to kind of get a, be a very clear understanding, particularly in light of North Vineyard coming back at a later date, so, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Continue, please.
Yeah, continuing, so we have intersection improvements, onsite traffic signals, there's a various onsite pedestrian signals, there are some signals that are in the park CIP as well, these are shown here. We've got railroad crossings, and major drainage crossings are programmed, as well as the, the light blue dash line is the fair share improvements for the City Sacramento are included. So, park improvements has 107 acres of basic park improvements, 36 playground soccer fields, various baseball fields, tennis courts and basketball courts, we've got shade structures, restroom buildings and parking lots, there's a community center on a four-acre site, have a 5.3 miles of trails along open space, and four pedestrian signals that I showed you on the previous slide. And 13.6 acres along minor roadways, and there's some trail and trailside improvements along joint-use detention basins. Going to the next slide, transit improvements programmed in the Florin Vineyard Community Plan are half-acre park and ride lot, which will provide 50 spaces, we got five interim bus stops, and then the rest of the facilities are programmed in the Sacramento County Regional Transportation Fee, which has buses and bus maintenance facilities. Here's the summary of the components with the total cost for each component. Roadway and frontage is $165 million and some change. Other jurisdictional fair share that goes to the City Sacramento is $6.5 million. Parks are 7.7 million, 75.7 million dollars. Transit is $561,010, and 4% administration cost. The total CIP combined for those four components, we're looking at $248 million. And some of these facilities, they overlap with the Sacramento County Regional Transportation Development Fees, and these are regional roadways and trails, and the Florin Vineyard Community Plan will receive appropriate credit for the overlapping facilities. Here's the DUE rate for the, each of the component. The total fee for the, including the administration is, we're looking at $28,235 per DUE when you sum all those up. That doesn't include SETDF. I'll show you that on the next slide. These fees are collected at the building permit issuance. Every March, we'll adjust these to ENR's CCI, Construction Cost Index, and then the program is designed to be updated every five years to account for any changes in land use and cost changes. Here's the sample calculation for a couple of different project types. We have RD5, RD20, and LC. RD5, we're looking at 26,625 for a single-family per unit rate. RD20 would be 17,889, and then LC for commercial is $29.55.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. And maybe I'm going to interrupt your flow here, but, and maybe it's on a next slide to come, but what do we know about these adjustments relative to the, to the totality of all fees that are paid?
I'll show you at the end of the slide.
That's right, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We'll get to those discussions.
Thank you.
Let me just walk through what we have.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just before you leave that slide as well, and it references your previous slide as well. So, the other jurisdictional costs, and so that's with the City of Sacramento, so are we funding downstream improvements, for example, on Fruit Ridge or Elder Creek, west side of South Watt? What is it that, for 6.5 million, you can't buy very much for that, but what is that fund?
So, it's a fair share improvements to various handful of, I can go back to the map here real quick. It has roadway segment widening, as well as the intersections I have in.
Those aqua, the ones in aqua.
Yeah, uh-huh. So, it's along those segments, there's some railroad crossings as well, so the Florin Vineyard Community Plan is paying a fair share towards those, and it's basically collected in our program and transferred over once we have an operational agreement with the City Sacramento.
You said, once we have an operational agreement? Because I know we talked about this in our general plan discussions nearly 10 years ago.
Uh-huh.
About how we would, you know, work interjurisdictionally with, you know, impacts, and likewise, are they taking us into account on their, you know, they have a lot of industrial employment-driven development, a lot of that's existing. So, is that working both ways? And we say an operational agreement, are we close to an operational agreement with them?
We have a MOU with them, but there is an operational agreement that will come after this program is adopted, and we'll work with the City Sacramento, as well as DOT, to bring that forward.
Yeah, at least process-wise, you should identify where we are with it. We've yet to have, I think, a substantially reliable discussion with the City of Sacramento about formalizing that agreement, the operational agreement. There's, there's a concept is understood, but in terms of actually engaging and, and working out the final parts of that operational agreement, we haven't made a lot of progress on that.
Okay, well, again, and then maybe that's something we as a board ought to initiate, either formal communications to them, because I think it's important. We're recognizing that, obviously, in our development, likewise, they should in theirs, and I think we, during our general plan discussions some years ago, we did talk about, you know, with Elk Grove and Ranch Cordova likewise, that if we impact those city jurisdictions with, you know, traffic via development that's approved in the county, for streets that, you know, motorists, you know, they pretty much care what, you know, where they're driving through, as long as it, you know, they can get through, you know, in a reasonable amount of time and, you know, safely. So, have we got any operational agreements with, you know, Folsom Ranch Cordova, Elk Grove, or City of Sac?
We have one with Ranch of Cordova.
Okay.
That's the first group that we have one with.
All right, well, I do think it's important, again, I know you have full plates, but I, that to me is important, because as, we see growth continuing in these regions where we come right up against one another to acknowledge, and I think certainly we're doing our part with this, and I think it's important that we continue to press our colleagues in other jurisdictions to take into account when their development impacts upstream or downstream traffic in our respective jurisdiction as well, so, okay, thanks.
Thank you. The slide shows the overlapping facilities between the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, as well as the SETDF. So, there's about $146 million of roadway improvements that overlap with the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee, and then 2.5, or close to 2.6 million dollars in trailside improvements. So, the total fee credit that will overlap per DUE is 15,000, and then District 4 rate is 17,000 and change, and plan area will pay a reduced SETDF fee at $2,377.33. Going to the next slide, I'm summing up the Florin Vineyard Community Plan fee and the SETDF and its components, and transit component and admin part of it, adding all those up, we're at $32,111.58. This includes all the SETDF and the Florin Vineyard four components and the administration cost. Our intent is to, in the ordinance, is.
And Supervisor Serna.
So, thank you. So, back, back to my earlier question, this is, this is the, these are all the fees for capital improvements, right?
Yes.
So, my question is, what are all the fees for capital improvements, and what are then all the impact fees together? That's what I mean by the totality of.
I do have a slide for that, I can.
Well, I looked ahead and I didn't see it, so.
Okay, it's, it's actually a hard copy. We can give you an example of a residential project, as well as a retail project.
The reason I'm asking is I want to understand kind of the total burden, that's the way it's going to be looked at by residential developer when they build their pro formas, to understand the total, the total fee load, and what, what that does to the feasibility of projects.
It doesn't count water agency or sanitation district, I mean, all those are over and above.
Yeah, yeah, these numbers don't have that, but I have that information here, if I can get a projector.
Okay.
And I think maybe one clarifying point is that the analysis of a total fee load, which is what we're now coming to, is, is not really driven by the specific finance plan adoption and approval, except.
adoption and approval, except if you said the total load needs to be modified in some way, and that we would use the plan area as one of the adjusting factors, right?
I understand.
Yeah, that's all.
So that's the typical load for a single-family prototype in RD5, a size of a 2,200 square feet home, in various different areas within Sacramento, as well as Placid County and City of Roseville.
So about $90,000?
Yes. So Foreman Vineyard, we are a little over 80, but it's less than the other plan area, like in North Vineyard Station.
When you show us charts like this, it'd always be helpful if you have a line that shows the mean.
Probably mean is somewhere around 70-plus.
We're a little above?
Yeah. Any other questions?
So that's everything? If you went to pull a building permit for a 2,200 square foot home, what you would put down on the table for that permit, a single permit, would be $85,000?
Yeah, that's all the fees, including the, even the services tax that property owner pays every year.
So County Service Area 10, County Service Area 1, all that's built in?
Yeah, everything is built in, yes.
Yeah, schools in here?
School fees, everything, yeah.
School fees, sewer, water, all the permit fees you put.
One thing we do like to caution in sharing this, it's always an interesting point, you know, of reference, is that we can't always guarantee that we have apples to apples from one jurisdiction to another. Greenbrier is an example of that here. And so depending upon how the projects are approved and how they're conditioned and what's being built, either through a finance plan or not, those numbers can vary a little bit. But this is a touch point, at least, to sort of see what do we think we're seeing generally across the region.
Does it include HCP, Capital Conservation Plan?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. So it's, that's a total full package, all the fees that we know about today?
Yes.
Yes. So going back to my first slide, can I get my slides back? So recommended actions are recognize the exempt status of the project pursuant to the CEQA guidelines, Section 15273A. Open an public hearing to establish the Foreman Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fees. Do we have any comments?
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? No. Then with that, we will open the public hearing. I have no speaker slips, but if there's anybody in the public that would like to address this issue, please come forward now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Thank you. So basically, action number four, we're looking at adopt the attached resolution approving the Foreman Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee, Resolution Number One. And then adopt the attached resolution approving the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Schedule for Foreman Vineyard Community Plan Area. That's the Resolution Number Two. And number six action is introduce an ordinance adding a chapter 16.85 to Title 16 of Sacramento County Code relating to the establishment of development impact fees to finance the cost of public facilities within the Foreman Vineyard Community Plan Area. Way full reading and continue the ordinance to May 21st for adoption. And number seven, introduce the ordinance number two, amending the chapter 16.83 Title 16 of the Title 16 of Sacramento County Code revising the boundaries of Vineyard Fee Program, Vineyard Public Facilities Financing Plan Development Impact Fee Program Area. Way full reading, continue the ordinance to May 21st for adoption.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, I'm prepared to move the item, Mr. Chair, but I just wanted to ask a brief question as it relates to both police services and maintenance on the roadways. I know that as we've talked, you know, in many workshops over recent months, in this forum and others, that, you know, we build in what it takes to build the infrastructure, but then there's really no component as it relates to the fee structure. It's dependent upon, obviously, the other streams of funding for the maintenance of that infrastructure, which goes in new. It has a life of 20, 30, 40 years, depending upon how far we stretch it. But I can tell you, for example, in some of the vineyard areas and elsewhere, that if we aren't able to, as you've delineated, get to those areas with some level of maintenance, and we put some general fund dollars towards that in recent years, then we, you know, we end up, you know, shorting all the folks, including the future homeowners and businesses in those areas, because the road infrastructure doesn't have any component for, you know, what happens in the future. And I'm not suggesting we do that with today's discussion, obviously, and that's, you know, that's a bigger discussion. But I would just say that there are some jurisdictions have dealt with that. And I, it would seem to me that as we're looking at, you know, what it costs to put the roads in, to, you know, put all the landscape meetings and stuff, we, you put in for the landscape maintenance, you're working in this case with South Gate in large part, or, you know, or with other entities, but you don't build any component in for the road. And of course, people pay gas taxes, we pay other property taxes, you know, that supposedly cover that. But I think what we've seen, certainly over the course of many decades now, it doesn't. And that's an asset, it's a public asset. And so, Mike, I know that, you know, you've looked at this, and I guess I just would, you know, offer that for a point of discussion. It obviously goes to that total package load there, which is borne by the new homeowner, borne by the development. And I get that, but if there's no prospect in, you know, in a lifetime that we're going to see our way clear on road maintenance as we look at it with nothing new added, then I think it certainly bears at least some discussion before this board as to how we address that and, you know, or through the development standards. But over the years, we've evolved that development standard so that you have a bigger pavement section, that's more cost loaded on and so forth, and you get more, you know, you get more wearability out of the durability, excuse me. But it doesn't last forever. And so, I don't know, again, I don't want to get sidetracked here this morning, but I would just offer that because I think it's, you know, something that we ought to at least have a discussion about because you take care of it with landscape corridors and with some of the streetlight maintenance and so forth. And even though that may fall short, it's a contributing factor. And I guess I would just offer that. And I don't know if there are any comments, Mike, you've worked on this for many years. But other jurisdictions have built that in. I know that a couple of our city, you know, cities within the county actually had that as a component of their development, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That's correct. So just as a clarifying component here, when these plans were approved, that sort of obligation and responsibility was not really identified in those plan approvals. So for some sort of ongoing maintenance activity as it relates to the road systems, we'd have to have a separate process, and I think you understand that. And it is something that the community, we could consider for the community to basically adopt or approve. But what I did want to highlight is that the new plan areas that are coming forward, that is a part of the analysis that we are now doing, is an obligation there. So some of this is sort of temporally, you know, affected, some things that were done many years ago as opposed to what we're doing now. So.
All right, that's good. Now, the other piece of the question was on the police services, you know, that NEXUS study was done probably 15 years ago now, if not even longer, maybe getting closer to 20 years now. And I think it has a bit of a factor there. It's not done at the time, obviously, development, it goes forward. But when I look at the, you know, cost of providing for law enforcement in a corporate area, the, you know, that component, it's, you know, it's not, it's not minor. It's a few hundred dollars a year. And the idea was is to maintain, you know, a static level of patrol and police services in those new areas based upon the burden they bring to that overall effort. And I don't know if there's any examination that's required after a certain juncture, you know, after a couple of decades, do you look at that and what that means? Again, it gets borne by homeowners. Some pay it and a lot don't because it was, you know, a fairly new iteration in the development package. But I just, I asked that question. I don't bother you.
Yeah, so this development is one of the developments that was conditioned to participate in the Police CFD. The Police CFD is recommended for any new subdivision in the county, creating five lots or more. So with that, it participates with a special tax that when it was mutually implemented was about $300 per parcel, and it has since been escalated by the CPI. So it's an absolute requirement of this development to annex to the Police CFD. And certainly it does provide funding for a share of the police services provided to this development.
And I would just note that I think it's important from a standpoint, we talked today about accountability, that, you know, one, and I know, you know, NAV has responded to this, make sure that every year in the budget, that we show what that number is, that it goes towards the sheriff's budget. But I think in meeting, you know, the premise that it was adopted by, that we would have some level of service delivery in those areas, you know, because it's an overall contributing factor to that. I do think as that contribution grows in development throughout the county, but certainly in the southern part of the county, that not so much even the tax and what the number is, but what comes in, that there's some accountability via certainly our budgeting process with the sheriff as to how, because I think otherwise it subjects us to challenge at some future date that, you know, you collect this from me over here for $400 a year, and yet this board will debate year to year its budget and what that means to patrol services and any other services in those neighborhoods. There was a nexus, it was fairly flexible, as I recall, but I do think that that needs to be a point because we're making, you know, I think it's upwards of a couple of million dollars a year now that go to sheriff's budget. Is that correct?
That's correct. I don't know the exact amount, and I can certainly review that amount and--
Okay. Well, again, it's all over the county. It's in all five of our districts to a greater or lesser degree. And I think it's important, again, it's not to have different levels of service necessarily, but I think to meet that commitment, we need to know. And there needs to be a recognition by the Sheriff's Department about that contribution and what it means to those areas that are paying, actually paying that. And you're going to have more come on over time with construction of new units and new business areas. So, okay. I would move the resolutions, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have motion and second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 40, I need a motion to drop the Water Forum Successor Effort Update.
Move to drop.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then for item 41, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. This is the hearing to withdraw a portion of the watershed sea in the City of Elk Grove from Zone 11A of the Sacramento County Water Agency. The environmental documentation is categorical exemption.
Good morning. Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. As was read into the record, this is a hearing to consider a withdrawal of the watershed sea portion located of development within the City of Elk Grove from Water Agency Zone 11. The watershed sea is an isolated area within Zone 11. And in order to more effectively administer the implementation of infrastructure and collection of fees, the city's adopted its own fee that would replicate what Zone 11 does. And rather than have us try to tag-team that, it makes a lot more sense for the city to carry that out. The area is hydraulically and geographically distinct and separate in that having the city take over a fee program for that area would not complicate the remainder of Zone 11A in terms of collection of fee or construction of infrastructure. One thing to note is that the Beachstone Lakes fee that we do collect in Zone 11A will continue to be received by the County Water Agency. That will not be taken over or administered by the City of Elk Grove. If there aren't any specific questions, I don't have a formal presentation.
Good. Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, I have a point I was going to ask you, Michael, and I guess, and this may relate, again, to this afternoon's discussion, so I won't belabor it now, but with the payment for the Beachstone Lakes mitigation fee for that contribution to the overall flood surface elevation, then those monies are under the authority of this Board of Supervisors. It does not require some concurrence or oversight by the City of Elk Grove because we're talking about downstream mitigation. Because I know on a couple of items we're talking about this afternoon, there's been a differing opinion about those that were paid either as a package of fees and/or financed through the developments. And so that money will then rest with the board for, and it can be used for, you know, the approach has been taken now is either berms, flood walls, or home elevations. And so that money can be used for those purposes. It's not restricted, constrained.
Nope. Nothing, absolutely nothing changes with regard to the authorization and authority over the Beachstone Lakes fee. Procedurally, it will be collected at the city and transferred to the Water Agency on a routine basis. But there's nothing in terms of authority, ownership, discretion. None of that changes. None of that goes to the City of Elk Grove.
Okay. And we could talk this afternoon about the other funds that are set aside currently. I just wanted to ask, was one of the points, you know, on page three, just above the Beachstone Lakes paragraph, where they did a study that predicted actually a reduction of peak flood flows discharging to the south and west of the city at Bruceville Road into the farming area. So is that because they're capturing a stormwater basins? Or what is it that you're, how is it they're going to basically have lesser peak flow into county? And again, our drainage system there is one that I don't, I'm not sure it's even in the stormwater utility. Is it?
Correct. No.
Okay. And so I would say that's a bit problematic in that, you know, to some of the discussions we're having elsewhere, that the roadside drainage becomes the drainage system for a lot of the southern part of the county. There are other tributaries and streams and so forth. But we have no, so basically they discharge lesser or more, and when, once it leaves the city boundaries, we're in kind of a no maintenance situation. And I think that presents a problem. And I think it's presenting greater problems elsewhere in the county. And I can look at even the jurisdiction to the south there where water just exits, and then we take what comes. We don't have, we have no ability to maintain channels, and we're having some discussions, obviously, about whether it's water resources or transportation, or whomever that maintains that system. Have we given some thought to that as we exercise this particular aspect of what's being asked for today, basically?
Yeah, I couldn't cite specifics from the study, but I do know that the drainage standards as far as infrastructure design in the city are comparable, if not in many cases, a bit more restrictive than ours in terms of how much is captured, how much is taken off from a peak flow design. The larger question of what happens downstream of the jurisdiction as it comes into the county where there's no funding source for maintenance, that would be an entirely separate discussion. And a, you know, ultimately, in order to carry that out, there would have to be a separate maintenance entity, separate maintenance funding established in order to do that. So it's been a frequent subject of conversation that we've had, that we had at the board. But there's nothing specific that's going to be established through this, but the recognition that the upstream design of the infrastructure in this area will reduce peak flow is primarily a result of the additional standards that the city has in their storm drain design requirements.
I would ask, certainly through NAV, Mike, and you, Michael, that we elevate that discussion as well as to what happens when it exits. I mean, we have to accept all the downs, you know, all the flow. And as they, this is City of Elk Grove, but whether City of Ranch Cordova, or Galt, or anywhere else, that if we're, you know, having to accept that water, the discussion we've had about roads is that there needs to be some ability. Otherwise, again, we're struggling out there right now. And, you know, I get it from the rural, you know, landowners, farmers, property owners, homeowners. And, you know, we haven't cleaned roadside ditches in a long, long time to any great extent. And, you know, that's the system that functions or not out there. And I think that as we look at, you know, drainage sheds going into the city, they take care of theirs, and then it's our problem when it gets across the road. And we don't have an ability to do it. So I think we do need to elevate that focus and discussion, not just with future annexations, but with our brethren in those cities. And I can tell you that as we look at future development, I for one will be watching for that because we need to know what's going to happen. It's not to burden folks, but if we're going to accept that responsibility, we better have some ability to meet our obligations that were there previous, but now they're, you know, now we're going to be accepting channelized water. It's going to get there quicker. It may pull off some peak flow. But nonetheless, our system is, you know, kind of a cross-country one, overland release in a lot of cases. And now we're going, I think, going to burden some of the existing system out there. So I would ask that we'd elevate that discussion, Michael, within the context of both the water resources, but certainly even with the city managers. So, thanks.
Sure. There's no other questions, and we just ask that your board, open the hearing, consider any testimony, close the hearing, adopt the categorical exemption, and adopt the enclosed resolution.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, any more questions from the board? I have no speaker slips, but I will open the public hearing. If there is anyone that would like to speak on this item in public, please come forward.
I'm speaking of this after I'm doing some investigation out there, and some things I heard here today, and also about what I heard at city level.
Just for the record, Mr. Worthy, can you state your name?
Matt, I may see the first name, last name, Worthy.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a serious water problem out there. When you see those green weeds growing up, sticking up, that's a problem. I have, I want to know who is a developer out there. We got some information on something, it's critical. It's critical what we have found out in investigation, but I'm working with somebody else. We can't even find an attorney. There is some connection in this city and other cities around it, and the housing situation, when public housing, we need to take a good look at public housing. When we talk about water out there, you got some things going on out there, people. We got documentation, but we CC'd people, and it's for a young woman, but we CC'd all the way to Washington DC. We are trying to bring the Secretary of Housing here, and talk about some things of what's going on here with housing and the water. Some things coming up this afternoon about some water, because I was told by an engineer with the city that she's going to pump some water in the ground. Don't pump it in the ground on Second Avenue, because you're going to get a suckhole. If you don't know what you're talking about, stay away from the water here, because we have to have something to capture water, because this, a lot of ground here has, was built on, it just got the ground down, they got a thing that as water goes in and it goes out. There is a situation here that we got to save some water, and we had to save those waters in the same tanks that we hold up sewer in, because the ground here with the sand, here it will seep out and go places, and you won't be there, but if you put it into a plastic, if you got a 12-foot plastic to put that water in and go pump it out later, fine, because you got some thing, people, I hate to say it, but we got some problems down the line. In that wish, I would recommend to solve your problems. My recommendation to eliminate city government.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. That's the only person I have speaking. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on this issue? If not, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I would move the item.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
For item 42, I do need a motion to actually drop this item. This was the workshop on a proposed Sacramento Homeless Policy Council.
So move. Yeah, I will second the motion and say that we're dropping the motion, we're dropping this, but it's not going to be dropped forever, that I do plan on bringing this back, but there were questions that board members had, and I think that they should have those questions answered and be able to make an informed decision, so, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, that ends the items we have here. We do have some off-agenda speakers, if we could take care of those, they have been waiting patiently, and it's appreciated. Joel Leathermore.
I'd rather have Reverend O'Dea here first, and I'll go second.
Good morning, Reverend.
Good morning. I'm Reverend O'Dea, I'm Reverend Director of Alufamy, which is the oldest Rastafarian organization western Mississippi, established in 1976, and I'm also Executive Director of the Justice Reform Coalition here in Sacramento, which was established in 2005. I come here today to talk to you about serious matter dealing with our community property, with our property and our church, which you've all been CC'd on many of the emails involved in this, and I haven't had any response from any of you except for Supervisor Natoli. So I just want to read this statement real quickly to you. The state and revenue code states, "It is not the policy of the state to increase the burdens of taxation beyond the necessary cost of collection, or to impose any greater burdens in a redemption from a delinquent tax sale than are necessary to secure the payment of the original tax. All matters of taxation are resolved in favor of the taxpayer, and express statutory authorization should be found for each item of cost to be imposed upon him. Now, this code has been violated by the city and county of Sacramento with regards to your refusal to provide records, or to meet with the representatives of Alufamy about our questions and concerns about questionable fines and fees placed against our residence headquarter property as secure, and now being used to force a tax sale of that property without due process, including those initiated as retaliation by a former city employee for outing him during several community meetings for, shall we say, misrepresenting. For several years, representatives of Alufamy have been asking for all the records pertaining to their property and a meeting to resolve our concerns, which is the right of a taxpayer, and this has never happened. Why is this? Why is the city not willing to open its records to us as required by law, so we can see what's behind these items of costs being imposed upon us? Why has the city and county refused to meet with us as required by law to even attempt to resolve our issues and concern? Why is the city and county so intent on taking the residence headquarters and property from where our nonprofit organization and church have served not only the disadvantaged and underrepresented Sacramento city and county communities, but many communities throughout California with no assistance from the city, county, or state, especially for questionable taxes, when corporations and developers are allowed to go tax-free and get assistance of all kinds? Why are the city and county always willing and ready to meet with the corporations, developers, and the wealthy to address their concerns at once, when people and small organizations like Alufamy are left in a void and can hardly get you to even hear or examine our concerns and issues? On June 7th, 2018, Howard Chan, city manager, who has been aware of our situation since 2014, wrote, "Greetings, Reverend O'Dea, our community development director, Ryan Devor, will be reaching out to you this week to see how we could insist. A meeting can be scheduled if our efforts do not resolve this issue for you. Hope you are well, and Howard." And on June 8th, 2019, Carlos Valencia sent us a letter in which he stated, "After review of the circumstances, I agree to postponement from the sale of the parcel in order to clear the issues surrounding the property." Now, because of these letters and because of this email, we were led in good faith to believe in and rely on the fact that things would be done to resolve our issues as had been promised to us for years. Since then, two people from the city were assigned to follow through with this, Ryan Devor and Chris Conley, and neither acted to assist us, nor did either attempt to set up a meeting to help resolve this. Both only provided statement responses which tried to justify the inaction of city officials with regard to our request for resolution, and the same can be said for Aaron Chang, a supervisor of Phil Cerner's office, which leaves us where we are today, fighting to keep our property from the tax sale acts, and all we have asked for is due process, to be treated fairly and justice, justly, so we demand that the city and county of Sacramento please remove the referenced property from the tax sale rolls immediately, and then provide the requested records, and schedule a resolution meeting with the representatives of Alufamy, so we can resolve this situation, redeem our property, and move forward continuing to serve the community. Now...
If you could wrap up, if you could wrap up, that would be helpful. You've been patient and waited here for a long time, but I have let you go.
Yeah, I don't like to have at least my five minutes to talk. I mean, that's the problem, you know, whenever we come, we have to wrap things up, but when we ask you to look into our situation and to help us, we don't get any help. I've asked Phil Cerner's office, sent numbers of requests to your office, and you haven't even responded, you haven't even called me in to talk.
I don't think that's true, but, go ahead.
No, it is true. Whenever you, you haven't talked to me, you haven't even...
I think my, I'm not going to get in an argument here with you.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just stating a fact. The only thing that's happened...
My staff has attempted to help you.
The only thing that has happened is that Aaron Chang has done exactly the same thing as the other people did. All they did was send us a statement about some things which weren't even true, which they didn't have no knowledge of, and telling us, oh, well, we're going to, we talked to our staff about this. How can you talk to somebody about an issue and you aren't even, the people that are involved in this, you aren't even there?
Reverend, I think we understand your point, you gave a very eloquent statement.
Oh, but I, I find, I don't, I don't see that happen, I don't see that, I don't see that, because we've been going through this for long enough time, and the responses that we have gotten from the county's people and from the city people have been erroneous, because they've never, they've never, they've never addressed any of the issues that we've asked for, mainly because they don't know the issues that we asked, because they have never asked us, sat down with us, to deal with this.
Reverend, okay.
And this is our right as tax, as taxpayers to have those meetings and to have this stuff dealt with.
We have a board member that has a question, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, if I could, I guess my question is, is that, my understanding is the pending tax sale is next Monday, and the city obviously has a role in that they've put forth the either liens, assessments, and/or penalties that are showing up on the tax sale for redemption, but this board, as I understand it, and certainly recall from previous conversations we've had about this and many other properties over time, that we have the ability, I guess within the framework of the law, and I guess I would ask county council, if we have the ability, I think recognizing, we're going to hear from others, and certainly I would, you know, lean to my colleague, Mr. Cerner, as well, who's, the property resides in his district, as does the church, but if we have the ability to do that, again, the outstanding amount is not significant, as I understand, it's 20,000, is significant to...
And we've also paid off all of the utilities and the stuff that have been...
So, you know, the amount is not, you know, measured in many, you know, tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars, it would seem to me that if we have the ability to suspend the sale, we go through this every six months with properties, and again, with, you know, certainly the ability to consider that, I'd like to know if, one, we can do that, and if, you know, maybe it requires a report back at 2:00, if, you know, it's been advertised, but again, in the past, we've intervened, rarely, but we've done that, and I guess I would like to know whether we have the ability to allow for parties to have some further conversation around that.
I do believe my staff has been pretty clear with county council's office, asking that very question, and the response back the way I understand it, that this is a city matter.
And I know nothing about this matter, it's not on the agenda, and I'm a little concerned that we're getting in too much detail...
I agree.
...on an off-agenda matter.
I agree.
Okay, just one point, though, but the city cannot sell the property. The county is the administrator of, unless, the city doesn't have possession of the property, so it's still, whether it's properly on the agenda or not, I get that, but if, we're not going to meet again until next Tuesday, and the sale's on Monday, again, I would ask if we could at least have some, you know, some information to us.
County executive, you've heard Supervisor Natoli's concerns and issues, would you look into that?
I'm sorry, can I make a suggestion? We're going to have a break here. I'm more than happy to facilitate a meeting in my office upstairs with someone from county council's office and my staff, to see if there's anything that can be done, given the, you know, urgency of the calendar here.
And may I also add that the amount that you have on there is inaccurate, because we've...
We, we, we're going way too into many, too many details for something that's not on the agenda, Reverend. It's the Brown Act, and so we have to abide by that.
I know the Brown Act, because I've also been a part of it.
I'm well aware.
You have an invitation to join me upstairs.
Right, the supervisor has offered to meet with you, so, thank you.
Come on.
Good morning, is this still morning?
Barely.
Okay, I'm short. Okay, good morning, I'm Suzanne Brooks, and the reason that I opted to speak to you today, I live on Northrop Avenue in the section between Hampton Road and Watt Avenue. I've lived there for over 20 years, maybe 25. When those houses were built, there was, the residents who bought those houses got permission to put bushes all across the front of our houses, because the street was wide, and that would shield us from the traffic. For some reason, the county no longer recognizes us as existing there. The county trucks abuse our street by hiding from their supervisors, they are lunching there, taking breaks, tearing up the street repeatedly. We complained to various offices in the district, and we were told for some years, well, the Northrop is going to be repaved, and when it gets repaved, you'll be repaved too. Well, they repaved, or you repaved, Northrop Avenue from Howe Avenue to Northrop, every part except our part. When we called and said, "What happened to our part?", they say, "You're not on Northrop." We say, "Well, where are we?" We get our mail there, we get our electricity and gas there, telephone service and everything is, says Northrop Avenue, and we've been living there for decades. I have complained, others have complained, and the street has been torn up repeatedly, and you refuse to fix it, because you say, "We're not on Northrop." So my question, and all my neighbors want to know, "Well, where are we? And to whom do we go for services?" I contacted Susan Peters' office, and we were told it wasn't her office's responsibility. We contacted the people that do the street paving, they say, "We're not on Northrop Avenue." So for years, for 20 years, we've tried to get your attention that we are on Northrop Avenue, and there, there's a lot of us, so...
Ms. Brooks, I'm the supervisor for that area.
I know who you are.
Okay, I was just going to suggest that you meet with Mike Penrose over here, who heads up our infrastructure department, and I think he can probably straighten this out. I'm not familiar with the issue, but certainly I've always been in favor of paving roads. It might be that this is a private road, I don't know, but he will give you his card and talk to you and try and straighten this out.
But my question to that is, we spent 20 years trying to get this attention. Why should I have to take time off from my business? It's not my responsibility, there's no mistake on our part, it's your mistake. Why can't you just do the job? All you have to do is have your street people come out and look at it. Our street was not paved when the entire rest of Northrop was paved. There's no excuse for that, we're not responsible. I'm spending time here, I have a business. When I'm not working, I'm not getting paid, and I've already spent time calling and calling, and so have my neighbors, so I don't need to meet with anybody, you just need to pave our street.
Well, you don't have to meet with somebody, I was just suggesting that that would be a good, Mike would be a good facilitator, so we could all know.
It's not good for me. Okay, well, then you don't need to meet with him. I'm here giving my time...
And I appreciate that.
...to bring this to your attention. I think I've given enough information, you can come out and look at the street, and then tell your people, "Pave the street."
So you just talked to the right guy.
Yeah, okay, so...
So, so we...
Yeah, so, you know...
We heard you, ma'am, thank you.
And I know you know who I am, because I'm very active in civil and human rights here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mac Worthy. Mr. Worthy, you've had many opportunities to speak today, so I'm really going to hold you to your two minutes this time, because we are running late.
You know, mainly, I get it in, because, see, I see the bus coming. The same thing in the sixties. Let me tell you something, I'll be 78-years-old, September 3rd. I've been in this town since I was 19-years-old. Why, I gotta get over here?
It's coming.
Why are we still here? It's not your problem, it's our problem, as Negro, not as African-American, I'm an American Negro, South Carolina. This is how they pay us off. Our program, the same thing will happen in housing. You go and never get out of housing, because the federal government owned this city once. When it left it, it fell on its face. The city of Sacramento is trying to buy everything and run a monopoly on low-income housing. You can't even find a attorney to file a suit against low-income housing. Why? Because there's a Mickey in the job. Because there's a Mickey in the jar, because investors. The same thing will happen. We'll be right here, I'll be dead and gone, you'll be right back here with the same issue. KKK is my bloodline in Chester, South Carolina. Blackfoot Indian, Cherokee Indian, and white boy. I ain't got nothing to do Africa, but why I'll be back here, because these people here got paid for these programs, were never fulfilled, and that's the same thing going on with housing. All these little programs in the neighborhood, dropping crumbs for a vote. That's when I stick to Donald Trump. He will be there again, and if he not there, it gonna be holy hell in America. Either way it go, so that's when I encourage young black men, vote for Donald Trump. He gonna give you a job in economics. You don't have to be in a welfare state, this is a welfare state. When people come to 60 movements, what did they do? Sign your wife's sign, or your woman with your baby's sign, the voucher, and you was arrested. You had no experience or nothing, you had no job.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
So these are the things that we gonna have to solve here, and you can start today, and I'll be back here this afternoon on some other issues.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. I do have cards free for this afternoon. And that concludes our morning session, I believe.
Yes, it does.
Do you want to just take appointments now, or?
Your nominations.
Will of the Board, we got a couple minutes.
That would be item 48.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you had one other person you called before Reverend O'Dea, I think she stood up to speak.
Oh, she, she, I actually gave him a lot of time, so that they could.
Oh, she a lot of the time, okay, I didn't know, I just wanted, okay.
I gave him her time.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's item 48.
Yes.
So for your nominations, you're continuing to June 4, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cardova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnis, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, continuing to June 18, Elk Grove, Consumnis Cemetery District, and Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Southeast Area Planning Advisory Council, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and for your first item, we have Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council. Nominate Mark Jacobs, please. Okay. Children's Coalition, Mr. Kennedy.
Chiefs recommend nominating Cindy Kane and Alyssa Duncan, and waive the process. For a second.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And we'll continue the remainder to June 18.
Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Nominate James Crowder, please.
Okay, Supervisor Natoli.
I don't have any current applicants, so we'll continue that for a month.
To June 18?
Yeah.
Okay. Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Mr. Natoli.
Would nominate Sandra Whitehouse.
And would you like to continue the remainder to June 18?
Yes.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to June 4.
Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend nominating Marion Batson, and continue the remainder to June 18.
Sacramento County Mental Health, Mr. Natoli.
Continue, please.
Is June 18 okay?
That's fine.
And Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to June 18.
Mr. Natoli.
Uh, June 18.
Okay, that concludes your nominations.
Thank you. Then we will have a recess, I believe we do have closed session, correct?
Yes, we do.
All right.
Okay, thank you.